School committee meeting of, let me see, of June 12th. And we've done roll call and executive session, and now we are on to the item of approving of items by consensus. Mrs. Benton?
We have two items on the agenda. The approval of the minutes of May 8th, regular session, and warrants payroll 58 and 522, circuit breaker 18, 19, 20, sped 23, 24, and 25. France 423, 424, 425, 432, 423, excuse me, 232, 233, and 234. And then L 34 and L 35.
Okay. The ones that we all vote on would be the May 8th regular session and G 423 through L 35. Could we have a motion? Ms., Dr. Quick?
Motion to approve the minutes of May 8th, 2013, regular session as well as warrants G 423, 424, 425, 232, R 232, 233, 234, L 34, and L 35.
Thank you. We have a second? Mrs. Burns. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. I need a motion to cover the payroll of 58 and 522. This is Burns.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Bressad. Thank you. All those in favor? And then two abstain, Linda, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. And then the last one is CB 18, 19, 20, sped 23, 24, and 25. Okay, I'll take a motion for that. Mr. Mullis?
Ah, so moved.
Second? Mrs. Bonnich. Thank you. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, and one abstain, Mrs. Burns. Thank you. We did it. All right. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
I'd like to rearrange the order and start with the Green Group and then go to DECA and then to the recognition of retirees. That is okay with the committee?
Uh huh.
And I would like to invite up four young ladies to come to the table. They are known as the Green Group. And I believe that Adele is the one who initiated the project, and could everybody introduce themselves?
I'm Bill Burton.
I'm Abby Melvin.
I'm Abby Burton.
I'm Sarah Lachmelia.
So, we learned that you have been involved in a very special project in the community, and we wanted to honor you tonight, and so we'd like you to tell a little bit about what you've been doing.
Okay, so, the Green Group is a group of girls in Wilmington, mostly 7th grade. And we get togethers once a month, and we talk about being green in our community, and we do trash pickups in our, and last year we sold basil in to benefit the World Wildlife Foundation. And our most recent sale is recycled bead bracelets, and we've made over $1,000 to give to the World Wildlife Foundation. We also do trash pickups in neighborhoods and around our schools. And that's really it.
That is just amazing. Congratulations to all of you. You really are true examples of what's so special about the Wilmington Public Schools. How did you get the idea? Were you, a group of you together one day and just thinking about something to do, or was it?
Well, I was on a walk with my mom, and I was just seeing all the trash on the street was concerning to me, so I gathered a group of my friends who I thought would be most interested, and we started having these meetings.
Excellent. My daughter bought me one of your bracelets. These are the bracelets. You can see I've been wearing it. It's going.
So for members of the community?
Oh, excellent.
I had to get one before you leave.
Yeah.
I paid, but I didn't get one. For members of the community, how could they purchase bracelets?
Well, we are, we're around town, so, I mean, if you see us around, we can most likely get you a bracelet. And also, we have a Green Group email. It's greengroupwilmington@gmail.com where, that we check frequently. So, and they're $8, and we have different sizes, children's and adults.
Any questions? Does anyone else have any questions, or?
How did you get the idea to make this?
Well, my mom's company was rebranding, and they had all these, like, folders and brochures that they, that had the old name on it, and they couldn't use them anymore. And they had tons and tons of these green colored folders, and she brought a stack of them home and said, "Well, can we deal with these?" And we did research, and eventually my mom came up with the idea to do recycle beads. And, and then we just, now every time we look at paper, we're like, "Oh, is this good for beads?" And it's just expanded from the green to every color you could think of.
Is there a certain type of paper that's better? Like, is it cardboard?
It's not quite cardboard, but it's like, it's not like printer paper. It's, it's like, not hard folders, but.
Not glossy paper?
Yeah, and, I mean, really, it's really specific.
Any other? Mrs. Burns?
I just want to say what a wonderful idea to participate in your community by selling these bracelets and contributing to animals across the world amongst other things. But what I, what I find so interesting, too, is that it's thinking outside of the box and coming up with new ways to contribute in your community that no one, it's a new idea which is unusual and unique, and all you're going to be very proud of that. It's a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just remembered that during the summer, we'll have two dates, hopefully two days, at the Wilmington Farmers Market where we'll be selling basil in decoupage recycled containers and our bracelets.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
So if you could email me the dates, we'll get that out of the community.
Okay.
Thank you. And on behalf of the school committee, Mrs. Benton will be honoring you with a congratulations in recognition for your hard work and dedication with establishing the Green Group in support of the World Wildlife Fund. We're very, very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Before you get these, Mr. Mullis, did you have, you had something?
No, I was just going to ask, since now you're getting all famous, you have more people that want to join your group?
Yeah, well, well, my classmates, they don't really know about it, because.
Well, you got to get the word out.
You got to get the word out. Adele. Eve? And would you tell the group there's one more of your classmates that was proud of this, that would be here tonight?
Oh, Taylor Briggs.
Taylor Briggs, so, let me give this to you and make sure that she gets it.
Thank you.
So, thank you all very much for coming tonight.
We're so glad to have you, and you, you're able to leave. You don't have to stay the whole night. It's up to you.
The next group that I'd like to invite up is some representatives of DECA with their classroom advisor, Krista Anderson.
I'm a business teacher here at the high school, and I just wanted to invite some students here because you've been wonderful to approve our field trips all over the country, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about what DECA is about. It is a co-curricular club which takes business, what we learn in the business classes, and the students are then able to apply it in real life. I'm going to have the students actually talk about it, so you can hear it straight from them. So, I have with me two seniors who just recently graduated, and also a current sophomore who is a junior next year, and also on the leadership committee.
Well, I'm Megan Prem.
I'm Kevin Goncalves.
And I'm Eric Althaler.
And so, we're just going to talk to you all about our experiences we've had so far with DECA.
Oh, we need to move.
Yeah, we have this lovely PowerPoint. So, like Ms. Anderson mentioned, we go on field trips all around the world. We start off with competition, which I'll get to. So, the three of us and with five other students, we all went to Anaheim, California for the International Career Development Conference in April, right after vacation. And we all did this on different events that we competed in. So, the competition part of DECA consists of tests and role plays. So, like Ms. Anderson said, we talk about business and applying that to the real world. So, in our business classes, we learn different ways that, like introduction to business, managing your money, different things like that. So, our test consists of questions that regard marketing and management. So, we each take a test that are 100 questions, and then we move on to the role play portion of our competition. These are sort of like a mock interview that require you to think on your feet. You're given a situation, and then you talk about how you can improve a business, or sell clothing at a store, or create a new piece of technology to make your workplace a lot better. So, these role plays really teach you how to think on your feet and a new environment, as well as practice your interview skills that also help you later in life as a job interview or college interview.
The Leadership Academy was in the international conference, and I was part of one of five different leadership academies, which was the Thrive Academy. And in this academy, we learned many helpful leadership skills in which we learned that to be a leader, you must first learn about yourself, and that you must, when talking to a group, you must keep everybody entertained, or else people will start to zone out and not listen to what you have to say. We, we learned that to achieve goals, you must talk to others and put, take everybody's input into account before you make the final decision.
So, in addition to the structure of the competition in the leadership academies, we also had time to meet people from all over the world. There are people from Guam, Florida, California, and every state had an association of DECA there. And so, we got opportunities to be able to meet with different people when we were competing in general sessions. And in addition to the stuff we did for DECA, we also did have time for some fun. We went to Disneyland, and we also took a tour of LA, and we just got to sort of enjoy the whole California experience. And so, the main benefits of going to this conference is that we got the opportunity to travel to someplace we wouldn't normally get to go, and we got to use our DECA skills and what we've been learning all year and in the club, and actually be able to apply them at an international level.
So, DECA at Wilmington High School is one of the more popular clubs in the past few years. We have over 100 members, which, including 13 of our Life Skills students, who come with us to our district competition in December. We have bi-weekly meetings, usually on Wednesdays, and we talk about ways to prepare for competition. We do practice role plays with some of our teachers that volunteer their time during class to get us ready to compete, as well as practice tests, which help us increase our score at competition. We also do different fundraising and community service events. Some of our fundraisers this year were a calendar fundraiser that we sold around Christmas time in the holiday season to our family members that they would win a raffle every day of the month. We also did, as some of you might know, the Harlem Superstars fundraiser. We've done this the past few years, and then this year, since obviously the gym was torn down, we collaborated with Burlington High School DECA to have one of the most successful fundraisers for the club. And we also have just worked with the community in volunteering in these different events. We've also had a couple of speakers come talk to us. One of them was a career coach, Mrs. Lisa Adams, who came and talked to us in November. And she talked to us about how we can transfer our skills in DECA to the real world and find jobs that would suit us.
Different job skills that we learned through DECA would, first off, be interview skills. That's something that you will not learn in school, I'll have to say. Interview skills are very important, because whenever you have a job, to get a job, you need the interview. And other job skills that we learned is, we actually run the school store here at the high school, and we sell cookies and slushies on Wednesdays. And with this, all the DECA students learn to use a cash register, and how to talk to customers, and how to use money.
So, one of the main benefits that we tell people is of joining DECA is that we get introduced into the business world. So, it allows us to connect the material and curriculum that we're learning in school and sort of get to apply it in the real world. So, in our role plays, we have opportunities to use the skills that we've already been taught, that we've been talking about in class, and sort of apply them in a way that we wouldn't in a real job. And so, DECA has probably about 30 different categories that people pick. You can either work on a team or by yourself, and in the process of doing that, you can pick something like apparel, or you could pick retail, sports entertainment, and stuff like that. So, in the different categories, students are exposed to different sort of types of jobs they could have, and they can help discover their interests, because some people really like their category, and they go in and they decide, like, "Oh, I want to be a sports marketer now." But other people decide that they might not like their category, and they decide to pursue a different aspect of business, or even like a different field entirely. But either way, you still get introduced to how business works, and you get to see beyond the classroom what it can do. And this helps prepare you for the future, like Kevin said, interview skills, and practicing, sort of thinking on your feet for when you have to do the role plays, you only have 10 minutes to prepare. So, it allows you to really have to act fast.
Well, like I said, I'm Kevin Goncalves. I'm a sophomore here at Wilmington High School, and my career interests, like Eric said, that the, the category that you're in might persuade you to join a career. And I was actually in marketing management, and, and last year I was in principles of marketing, and I really enjoyed all of marketing and, like, learning about it. So, I've decided that going into college and for life, I'd like to work in the field of marketing and go to Bentley University. DECA has helped me in many ways. It has taught me to become a better public speaker. It has helped me with interviews, as I now work at Stop &amp; Shop in North Reading, and I had an interview, and it went great, and my manager actually said that it was one of the best interviews that he's had from a student. Next year, I will be part of the executive committee here at Wilmington for DECA, and we hold weekly meetings outside of the meetings that we have with the whole club to decide where we want the club to move on for the year. And I also am going to be running the school store, in which we will be trying to sell different things to get kids to buy and help fundraise for our other events that we have throughout the year for DECA. And I would also like to be running for a state office for DECA, which is a board of students, between six and nine students from around the state, and they run the club for the calendar year. And I feel like it would be a great opportunity to get to know kids from around the state and to be able to run DECA and help out the future classes of DECA.
Well, like I said, I'm Megan, and I just graduated a couple of weeks ago. In the fall, I'm going to Boston University, and I'm majoring in biology, and I'm also going pre-med. So, I want to be a doctor. And clearly, DECA is not a medical club, so you're probably like, "Why am I in here?" So, DECA really helped me decide what I wanted to be. I joined DECA sophomore year, and I had absolutely no idea what I wanted to do. I was in interative business, and Ms. Anderson was really persuasive in asking me to join. So, I did. And I did learn that business, I don't think was my calling, but I did learn some helpful skills that will definitely be useful in the future. I can speak in front of a group of people that I don't know really easily. I'm, I know how to manage a group of people, as I was one of the chapter officers the past two years. I've learned how to deal with problems and miscommunications with other people, and dealing with issues in order to get to a solution. So, DECA really has helped me in preparation for my future. I know how to deal with people as a doctor. You, all you do is deal with people. I want to be a pediatrician, so dealing with kids is one of the main aspects, obviously. So, with all my work in DECA, I definitely think I'm ready to take on the next step and go to college. I'm not nervous about meeting new people. I'm not nervous for any of the challenges ahead of me, and I think DECA has definitely prepared me for that.
My name is Eric. I am also a senior who just graduated. In the fall, I'm going to be attending Bentley University, and I'm really interested in the field of accounting. And while my category in DECA, I actually did retail marketing, and so that wasn't sort of what I decided I want to do. I decided I want to pursue more the financial side of business. And so, when I started high school, I really had no idea what I wanted to do. I was really interested in music. I thought I was going to be a producer or something like that. And then I was sort of thrown into interative business. I didn't really sign up for it, and I ended up really enjoying it, because I had Ms. Anderson. And so, she persuaded me to join DECA. And so, with DECA, I got to see how interesting and exciting business was before I really thought that business was sort of boring, like, "Why would you do business?" But I really got to enjoy business. And working as a chapter officer with Megan and our other friend, we got to coordinate events, and we had to learn how to sort of set up fundraising and deal with different people to have things like the Harlem Superstars. And having these leadership skills and being able to talk in front of everyone in DECA every single week and having to plan the meetings, it really helped me to step up and be a leader. And I think that that was a really good benefit of DECA, along with exposing me to the field of business and sort of helped preparing me for what's going to lie ahead in college.
So, again, we just wanted to say thank you for all the support you've given us over the past few years. I think I'm speaking for everyone, and I say that DECA was my favorite experience of high school, and I think it's important for everyone to get a chance to see what we do. So, again, just thank you for all your help.
And I'd like to acknowledge Krista Anderson, because it was Krista who, when she came to Wilmington, asked, "Do we have a DECA club?" And we did not. And she really started this from the ground up and has, I agree, it's probably one of the most popular clubs at the high school, but it's Krista's inspiration, energy, enthusiasm that really has brought all of you to where you are today, and the rest of the members of the DECA club. So, a huge thank you to Krista as well. Best wishes to our graduates as you go on. Come back and tell us how you're doing.
Definitely.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I think this is so wonderful about what, things that are happening in the school system. We thank you for coming and taking your night, especially graduates, taking your time to come here and tell us. And it does show how much you really enjoyed the program and got so much out of it, and that's what's really important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. They're taking a picture. She's taking a picture for me.
Oh, she's taking a picture.
Yeah.
Okay. I was going to do this before the retirement.
So, if you retire, we. Can you go take the picture, because they need Kate? Sorry.
Tonight is a night of recognitions here. Sorry. Yeah, what do you mean? She doesn't know we need her.
Get a little surprise.
Oh, here she comes.
Yep, she's all done.
Well, you can take a picture of Kate.
We knew you were going to take a picture of someone. We're not sure how many people know this. We have just a little surprise, and a token of our esteem for you. We're so proud of you. Kate is no longer just Ms. Burnham. She is Dr. Burnham. And so, we would like. So, could you tell us where, in what area, and where we see the doctor? From where?
Leadership and Learning from Riviera University.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. So, we wanted people to know that there is still, there's still more education and more education.
Forever and ever.
Forever. And we're so proud of her. So, we'll be calling her Dr. Burnham from now on.
Thank you very much.
So, this is probably my most favorite meeting of the year in one respect. In another respect, it's probably my saddest meeting of the year, because it's the night when we honor Wilmington's finest. Tonight, we're going to be honoring 373 years total of teaching in the Wilmington Public Schools. 373, which is amazing. And we're going to invite the school committee to stand up in front here, and I'm going to go alphabetical order, and as I call you, if you would come up, we have a little thank you. So, I'm going to start with Madame Beckwith. If you could be on this side, it'll make it, yeah. Joyce Beckwith is a foreign language teacher and our curriculum team leader in the Wilmington Public Schools. She's been here for 27 years. And interesting enough, our paths crossed, because Joyce taught at Fisk Elementary School before I was principal there, and she also worked in, at the two middle schools in Lexington. She started out teaching in New York and then Somerville High School.
Just for six months.
Six months. There is no one who is more of a proponent of French than Joyce Beckwith. And she's been a true leader for the department, and we wish her the best.
This is presented to Joyce Beckwith in appreciation of your dedicated service to the students of the Wilmington Public Schools, June 2013.
Thank you. And I'd like to say that how appropriate that Mrs. Kane gives this to me, because Andy was in my Spanish 5 class, third row, first seat. I taught Katie in French for two years, and I taught Stacy in both French and in Latin, and I enjoyed all of them. And Mrs. Bonnich, you know that I taught Jimmy and really enjoyed him in Latin. So, it's meaningful to me that I'm receiving this from parents whose students I enjoyed so much.
And I'll tell you that my daughter, Katie, is getting extra money for knowing a language, foreign language, in her field in social work. So, it's really, it pays to do a foreign language, seriously.
Well, I've been trying to get a course then called Careers, and maybe after I leave, it'll get in.
Yes.
Because it does.
Keep working on it.
It does open other doors.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Next person we'd like to honor is Christine Boukavas. Christine has been a reading teacher at the Wilmington Middle School, the North Intermediate, the Woburn Street, and the Shawshine. She started out as an MCAS study skills teacher at the Wilmington Middle School, and has given 40, 40 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I haven't stopped yet, really. This is the school, so I'm going to tutor. Because we're going to be taking more courses.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Our next honoree is Alan Chassie, who is targeting Christine, and that he has been with the Wilmington Public Schools for 41 years, as a science teacher at the West Intermediate, the North, and ending up at the Middle School. And he is by far the student's favorite science teacher. They're all telling him that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to go to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. Our next honoree is Karen Dolan. One of the pleasures of working at the Roman House, being right next to the high school is I get to see, I've watched over the past few years, Karen teaching tennis, Karen taking our students for long walks when they didn't want to because of lack of gymnasium, but keeping them upbeat and excited. She's been a health physical education teacher at the North and now at the high school, and has given us 26 years of service. Thank you, Karen. Started out as an ed assistant at the Wildwood, and has been a grade two teacher at the Shawshine Elementary School ever since, and has given us 20 years of service. Congratulations, Nancy. Jerry Lapointe has served the Wilmington Public Schools for 34 years. Started out as a reading teacher at the Woburn Street in Wildwood, acting principals at the Shawshine and Woburn Street, a grade three teacher at the Shawshine, a Title I teacher at the Shawshine, and. Shawshine and now elementary literacy coordinator and Title I director. There is no one that I know that knows more about how to teach reading than Jerry Lapointe and we are going to lose all of that history when he walks out the door. Congratulations, Jerry.
When I leave, all the history will go because whenever there's a question, they ask me.
It takes a very special teacher to be a special education educator and now we honor Meryl Lynch, who has given 23 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools. She has had the distinct pleasure of working at Woburn Street, Shawshine, North and ending up at Wilmington Middle School. And she has served our students so well and has done it always with a smile. So thank you so much. The next person we're going to honor is someone that I actually had the pleasure of speaking at a retirement party, Deb Pozziale. There is something special about a teacher who devotes herself to probably the most fragile of our students and does it in a way with the most incredible energy and zest and love and caring. There's no one in the school system that has a bigger heart than Deb Pozziale. She has given 31 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools and she was an ed assistant at the...
Bazzell.
Bazzell. And she was head teacher at Bartwell, special education teacher at Bartwell. And I came along just when she decided that she really missed the classroom. So she gave up the head teacher position because she just really loved those students and you will not ever be replaced. Thank you, Deb. Sue Rowe has been a nurse for the Wilmington Public Schools for the past 27 years. I think that every single student at Wilmington High would agree with me that if they ever needed to talk to someone, she's the go-to person. Soft-spoken, kind-hearted, caring and always with the student's best-interest at heart. Sue is the unsung hero in the Wilmington Public Schools. She goes about her work quietly and has such a huge impact on all of our students. So we thank Sue for her 27 years of service to Wilmington. Last but not least, as a superintendent, I have the pleasure of getting to go to all the fun shows in town. So I get to go to the kindergarten presentations, the preschool presentations, the music concerts. And up until this week, I have never missed a Deb Stola concert because you don't want to miss one of those. Deb Stola has been in Wilmington for 32 years. She has taught at the North Intermediate, the Wildwood and the high school. Deb is the type of teacher that I wished I had when I was in school because I never learned to sing. And when you see the quality of what she produces in our students, it's a gift that is something we are going to miss. So thank you for bringing music into our schools and for giving us a symphony of melodies and voices for our students that is something special in the arts. Thank you, Deb. I would just like to acknowledge Barbara Berry, who was an ed assistant for 16 years in the Wilmington Public Schools who retired in September, Janet Everson, 13 years library media specialist at the Western Shawshine, and Jim Megacy, 39 years of service, science teacher, curriculum team leader and part-time technology coordinator who are also retiring at the end of the school year. Congratulations to you all. Kate, can you get a group picture of that? Thanks. No, you go back. Thanks. Thank you all. In your packets tonight is a report that Principal Tracy prepared on the class of 2013. I think you'll all agree with me, that graduation was most impressive, our class of 2013 scholarship night certainly shed light on the talents of our students. They're a very gifted class and one, a group that I am certainly going to miss. We also included in your packet tonight a curriculum summary and a professional development report for Dr. Burnham on all that's gone on during the year.
Did anyone have any comments on that report?
I think it's a question that we've just answered by Dr. Burnham.
Oh, okay.
So we might, if we don't, can we revisit it?
Sure, we can revisit it. Let's keep going. We've got some brewing screens on the table, on the table.
Let's make Kate up for the old male on there.
No, this...
I want to see it too, so.
There, I'm pleased to announce that on June 3, Wilmington Education Association ratified, Teachers Association ratified the new educator evaluation for all teachers and nurses. And I'm hoping that you will vote to approve it this evening as well. We basically took the model on language from the state and we will be putting, keeping, we have a committee of President of the Association, Joe Kaponis, Bob Mariello, Teresa Piazza, Laurie Bailey and Principal Jeff Straznick and Dennis Shaw, Kate and myself, that will be the team overseeing the whole process next year. We have brought, will be bringing in Teachers 21 to train all of us, including our teacher teams from each school that we are recruiting right now to learn the process, August 21st and 22nd. Our first full professional day will be spent on a workshop with Teachers 21 on developing SMART goals. And we are, Kate and I are in the process right now of identifying with the association half the staff of professional, of teachers with professional status that will be evaluated next year. It's going to be a slow process, a learning experience for us all as we go along and I will keep you informed.
If there was some, oh, Mrs. Burns, I'm probably going to ask what you're going to ask.
I just had a question. Will the data from these evaluations be made available to the school committee regarding percentages of teachers in each district, each, excuse me, school and where they sit or?
The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's has asked the commissioner to not do that because he, they're talking about publishing this information. It is very, we're fortunate in a way of our structure of our schools because there are seven teachers at grade level. But most schools in Massachusetts, there's only two or three teachers and even without names, that data would be detrimental. So that is still being discussed. It's part of a personnel file, so I'm not quite sure why he thinks it should go public. And that would not be shared with school committee or anybody else if it stays as part of the personnel record. So we'll, we'll keep you abreast of what's going to happen. But I was at a Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association meeting today and Chris McGrath was telling us that that's the one thing that Tom Scott is asking the commissioner not to do. If you followed the news a couple of weeks ago, in Boston, they released aggregate information, 77% of the teachers in Boston were proficient. That type of information probably will be given to the school committee, but not individual.
Very good, okay.
I was just going to ask, when the Teacher 21 training comes in, if there's any particular section of it that might be beneficial to school committee members who might be able to attend one of those training sessions? I, I don't know if that would be clear to us or not.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's better to have Mike Gilbert come in and when he does the superintendent one, also he could talk about, you know...
Good, okay.
Probably go through the teacher evaluation piece.
All right.
I also brought the committee this evening. You have not seen, the principals are, will be also on a new system and this is theirs. Wow, it's going to be quite a year.
Look how long and how big it is. Oh, geez. This is going to be interesting. Did anyone have any questions on this evaluation? I know some people had asked questions ahead of time, I think. Because we have to approve this evaluation language. And the Teachers Association did ratify, they did ratify it on June 3, this language. And so if the teachers are happy with it, our side is happy with it, I would entertain a motion to approve the new Wilmington educator evaluation language. Mrs. Barnes?
I'll make a motion to approve the new Wilmington educator evaluation language.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Burns. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the committee that worked with me, the teachers and administrators. Went well, didn't you think, Kate? Okay, in your packet this evening is a report from Mr. Rogero on our revolving accounts, which are posted through March 2013. Do we have any questions?
Yeah. Did anyone have any questions on the revolving accounts? You're getting too clear now, Mr. Rogero. We don't, we can't figure out any questions to ask you. It's so well done. Thank you so much. Should we go back to this one?
Kate?
MJ had a question.
I just wanted to ask you with regards to the curriculum review summary regarding the English department, it was mentioned some teachers had used writing folders. I was just wondering if, what percentage of those teachers, you know, amongst them all, used writing folders?
All of the teachers at the high school and I believe even at the middle school level have been exposed to the concept of the writing folders.
Right.
All of them have tried them.
Okay.
And they're, they're being implemented in varying levels, classroom to classroom at this point. But they've all, they've all had exposure.
No, no.
No.
I was just curious because I know some did seem to really like them in, in the, as a useful tool. I just didn't know, how many, would you guesstimate percentage are still using them actively? Guesstimate.
I would say maybe actively, a quarter.
Okay.
Doctor Maklos is also in the audience.
Thank you.
It is my hope that Doctor Maklos will consider bringing to Wilmington, I've been asking the administration at the high school for nine years, the writing lab model from Winchester High. This is a program that is given to all sophomores and I have seen the benefits of it. I think that that's an area that we can improve on and all students would have the benefit of this course. So I'm hoping next year at this time, there might be a recommendation for, well, actually in the winter, for a new course at the high school.
Sounds great. Thank you. Any other questions? Once again, this was a very thorough and well-done report. Thank you so much.
The town manager needs a vote to authorize, to execute the contracts for the North Intermediate School Window Replacement Project and the motion needs to be read as is.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion that the school committee confirm that the town manager is authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Wilmington District, the project funding agreement accelerated repair program for the North Intermediate School, MSBA project number 201203420060 with the Massachusetts School Building Authority and to make final binding decisions with respect to the proposed project and to execute any and all contracts for the performance and construction of such projects pursuant to the Town Manager Statute, ST 1950 C 59212F and G. Mr. Mullis.
Make a motion that the school committee confirm that the town manager is authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Wilmington District, the project funding agreement accelerated repair program for the North Intermediate School, MSBA project number 201203420060 with the Massachusetts School Building Authority and to make final binding decisions with respect to the proposed project and to execute any and all contracts for the performance and construction of such projects pursuant to the Town Manager Statute, ST 1950 C 59212F and G.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Barnes, second. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you.
School committee needs to approve the coffee paper bid award. Mr. Rogero sent out a request for bids and the submission deadline was May 13. WB Mason was the bidder with the lower cost per cotton of paper coming in at $24.28 per cotton. This compares favorably with the cost for last year, which was $26.08 per cotton, also provided by WB Mason. We're looking for a motion to approve the WB Mason vendor for the paper bid.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve WB Mason Company Incorporated be awarded the vendor bid for the 2013-2014 school year. Mrs. Burns, so moved? Do we have a second? Mrs. Barnes. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. Public comments?
If I might, I'd like to thank you all again for the flowers. They're beautiful. And I'd, I'd like to publicly acknowledge Joanne Benton for the support that she gave me for the last two years as I finished my doctoral studies. She was a tremendous support. I appreciate it.
I just gave her two picks to keep her eyes open.
That's pretty close to true.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. It's really great. People can collaborate and we offer the benefit of the system so much to benefiting our children. And speaking of benefiting our children, our next reports are the subcommittee reports and we have some members of the CPAC who are going to come up and give us their yearly report for our subcommittee. And if you'd just introduce yourselves, ladies, and this is a wonderful, wonderful group. I cannot tell you strongly enough how much I have enjoyed going to these meetings and they're doing so much for the children.
My name is Mary Allen. I am one of the co-chairs of the Wilmington CPAC.
I'm Jo Newhouse. I'm one of the co-secretaries for the CPAC.
I'm Mary Ann Donovan. I'm also a co-chair for the Wilmington CPAC.
And our goal tonight is to present you with our annual report of activities this past school year and a little sneak peek at where we hope to focus our attention next year. The main focus of the CPAC is... The main focus of the CPAC is providing parent education workshops. We strive to present at least four of these every year. This year, we did Federation for Children with Special Needs Basic Rights Workshop, an IEP for My Child, and Understanding Your Child's Learning Skills. We also hosted a Get to Know Your CPAC Coffee Hour. Some school committee members joined in, so we were thrilled, thank you. In addition to our parent education workshops, we're excited to report that for the first time, we were able to host a guest speaker for some of our middle school students. Based on parent feedback, we collaborated with the middle school administration to offer a workshop to 25 special education students and seven staff members. This was offered also through the Federation for Children with Special Needs. The guest speaker was Rhea Smith, and she presented a workshop celebrating yourself. Based on staff's professional development survey results, and in collaboration with Mary Hood, Administrator of Special Education, and Laura Stinson, Physical Education Teacher and Liaison, we were able to offer a workshop for staff addressing strategies for adaptive physical education. This workshop was provided by the SCENE Collaborative and was presented by John Gardner. We had over 25 staff members in attendance, and the reviews were so positive, we're looking at doing it again. As a result of our feedback from our child care needs assessment survey that we accessed through the district website, we created a child care pilot. We offered child care during our basic rights workshop, and this was done in conjunction with Diane Garrity of the Wildcat Community Service Program. Unfortunately, due to lack of parent participation, we decided not to pursue it again. We may look at it again in the future. In January of this year, we provided input on the proposed changes to the district's seclusion restraint policy, which the school committee ultimately approved. A few of our board members actively participated in the first Merrimack Valley Resource Fair. This was done this past October at Merrimack College, where many special needs vendors were in attendance to provide information about their services to parents of special needs children. We also brought our information to the community tables at both the Wilmington Farmer's Market and the Libraries Community Fair. Some of our board members worked with the middle school administration to check into the feasibility of bringing the Best Buddies Program into the middle school. Our subcommittees are currently working on membership outreach, a second Merrimack Valley Resource Fair, parent education workshops, community education, and another needs assessment survey. We are also represented in other communities in the district. These include the Homework Committee, the Stress Committee, the School Health and Wellness Committee, and the Anti-Bullying Committee. On September 15, again this year, we will be present at a table for the Wilmington Farmer's Market, and we're working on other opportunities for parent and community education in addition to maintaining our presence at other town meetings. Anything involving special education issues, recently, the presentation done to the Board of Selectmen by Autism Speaks, we made sure we were present there. And in closing, we wish to thank the wonderful school district for your unwavering support of our efforts. We couldn't do this without the cooperative effort of Superintendent Joanne Benton and you, our school committee members. A special thank you goes to Mary Hood. We are extremely thankful for Ms. Hood's collaborative work style and her commitment to our work. She has real follow-through and is a great wealth of knowledge for us. She is the ultimate educator. And finally, we wish to encourage parents and staff to contact us through the district's website and find out more about our upcoming events. And thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Benton. I just want to add, because I met with Joe Kaponas today, we agreed on including a position for Best Buddies for the Middle School in the contract, stifened position.
That's wonderful. That's good to know. Great.
We're thrilled that you want to do that at the middle school as well, it's a great program.
Excellent. Excellent. Oh, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Can I send one with you?
Oh, please.
I just want to, no, I think last week's scholarship night and graduation night, graduation really pointed out to me how much I appreciate parents' trust in the Wilmington Public Schools and seeing a couple of our life skills students graduating, going on to Middlesex Community College. When I first came to Wilmington 10 years ago, that those students would not have graduated from Wilmington High, we didn't have a program, and through the efforts of Marlene Potter and Mary Hood, it has really blossomed. And those students are just one tiny example of all that special education gives back to us. So we thank you for trusting in us, and hopefully we won't let you down.
Thank you, you have it good. Thank you so much, ladies, we appreciate it. That's great. Do we have any other reports, honey?
No, we're late.
Okay. No other reports over this way? No? Okay. Correspondence?
No.
Okay.
I haven't been writing lately.
This is true. All right. Future meeting dates and agenda items. Our next, we will be adjourning for the summer. Our next meeting will be August 28. Should anything, of course, we do that with a caveat that should anything come up that requires, you'll be given notice, but if we needed to have an emergency meeting for whatever reason, we wouldn't take it lightly, it would be something important, but hopefully there won't be any emergencies over the summer. We'll be all set. All right.
Just like to wish everybody in the Wilmington community a happy summer. The last day at school is June 20th, off day for students, and we hope everyone has a safe, fun summer and comes back to us.
Absolutely. That's great. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Burns? And a second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. Have a great summer.